I mean, do they, they gotta take the ride again? Do you gotta go through training and take their ride again?
Good evening, I call this meeting to order. It's the regular council meeting, September ninth, two thousand nineteen. The time is seven thirty P.M. Will the clerk please take the role?
Mayor Pro Tem Bliss?
I'm here.
Councilman Corbett?
Present.
Councilman Geddings?
Here.
Councilwoman Scott?
Here.
Councilwoman Soltis?
Here.
Mayor Hartwell?
Thank you, I'm here. Would you please rise if you're able for an invocation to be led by Mayor Pro Tem Mark Bliss and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance?
Dear wise and loving heavenly father, let me first thank you in advance for the thoughts, comments, and concerns from those who are with us in person here tonight, as well as those who are watching this meeting at home. Also, thank you for all of the outstanding leaders in our schools, our community groups, and our city boards, who are all working hard to move our city forward. Loving heavenly father, I come to you this hour asking for your blessings and help as we are gathered here tonight. I pray you guide our council on the matters at hand, and I ask that you clearly show us how to conduct our work with a spirit of joy and enthusiasm. Help us to work together and encourage one another to excellence as we focus on making this community even more prosperous with each and every passing day.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight?
Your honor.
Yes, Mr. Bliss?
I move that we add to the agenda under D two, the tentative agreement with the forty-third District Court Union.
Thank you, sir, is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Sir, I'd be happy to support that.
Thank you, a motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Councilman Corbett, to add to the agenda under item D two, the tentative agreement with the forty-third District Court Union. Is there discussion on this item to add? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose say no? The motion carries, the item is added as D two. We have a presentation, or I'm sorry, are there any other additions or deletions? Okay, we have a presentation this evening regarding Suicide Prevention Week, which will be from September eighth to the fourteenth. And Mrs. Marsh, I believe you have a proclamation to read?
Yes. Whereas World Suicide Prevention Day is recognized internationally and supported by the World Health Organization on September tenth of each year, and the National Suicide Prevention Week is September eighth through the fourteenth. And whereas according to the National Center for Disease Control and Prevention in the United States, one person dies by suicide every twelve minutes with forty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty-five deaths by suicide in our country in two thousand and sixteen. Whereas in our country, suicide is the second-leading cause of death for ten-to-thirty-four-year-olds and is the tenth-leading cause of death for people of all ages. Whereas each person's death by suicide immediately affects at least six other people with over two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand newly bereaved each year. Whereas nine-point-eight million Americans seriously think about suicide with two-point-eight million actually making a plan and one-point-three attempting. Whereas in two thousand and sixteen, substantially more people are hospitalized as a result of non-fatal suicide behavior than are actually fatally injured, and even a greater number are either treated in ambulatory settings or not at all. Whereas programs such as the Student Safety Program, OK to Say, and the Oakland County Youth Suicide Prevention Task Force offer educational programs and intervention. And whereas the Suicide Prevention Week is being recognized to promote reducing the frequency of suicide attempts and deaths and the pain for those affected by suicide deaths. Whereas the city of Madison Heights recognizes suicide as a public health problem and suicide prevention as a community responsibility. Whereas far too many Michigan residents die by suicide each year, and most of these deaths are preventable. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council proclaim the week of September the eighth through the fourteenth of two thousand and nineteen as Suicide Prevention Week in Madison Heights and urge all citizens to raise their awareness, learn the warning signs, and help prevent suicide by encouraging those at risk to seek life-saving help.
Thank you, Mrs. Marsh. We can continue on the agenda. We'll go to meeting open to the public. If anyone would like to address city council on any subject, now is the opportunity. The meeting is open to the public. If you'd be so kind to limit your comments to three minutes or less and give your name, address, and any affiliation. Good evening.
Good evening, I'm Gloria Moore, twenty-seven, three-sixty-eight, Darapmouth, from the Friends of the Madison Heights area, senior citizens. We're having another third Tuesday meeting, September sixth, I mean, September seventeenth, at seven o'clock over at the Clark's Fabrication and Design, over at one-four-four-four East Eleven Mile Road. We're also going to be having refreshments available. And it's avail, and it's open to, everyone here is welcomed. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Pat Shields, resident of Madison Heights. In reference to your ordinance two-one-two-nine allowing for two Class C growers, two processors, and two provisional centers. I do understand you're going to be taking a vote today on expanding that. And I have always wondered how soon you were going to attempt to do this, that at the beginning, referring to just two wasn't going to be sufficient. And Mr. Mayor, your comment in the Madison Park News made me a little nauseous. You're representing the will of the voters. They did not vote. They have marijuana growers and dispensers in our city. They voted for the legalization of marijuana and the right to use it. You took it upon yourself, or the committee did, to turn that into allowing growers and the likes in our small city. It's all about money, and that's all it is all about. I truly feel you don't care about our city or our kids. Report after report are showing levels of marijuana disorder in continuing of rise, disorder continuing to rise in our youth. A two thousand and eighteen report showed four-point-four million people ages twelve through twenty-five had a marijuana use disorder, ranging from loss of IQ, psychosis, depression, schizophrenia, suicide, and anxiety. And I'll be happy to support that report. Marijuana is an addiction drug. It doesn't cure anything. It numbs your brain. You can't stop the kids from getting the drug no more than you could stop them from smoking or drinking. But you sure can help stop it by not contributing to additional dispensaries in having one on almost every corner in our city. And this myth that you have to be twenty-one to get this weed, give me a break. You gotta be twenty-one to get cigarettes and alcohol, too. And being this body has not made an effort to up out of recreational marijuana, I am sure your next proposal will be to allow recreational marijuana in our city. I would question why you think we need more than two dispensaries, or growers, or whatever, in our small city to accommodate the people that need medical marijuana. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Kim Clark, and I'm part of an organization here in town called the One at a Time Community Response Team. I live over at Hampton and Gardenia on the city's south side. I just wanted to come and talk a little bit about the success of our last effort to pull together donations from the citywide garage sale to throw a free rummage sale for those in need. We were able to rehome more than eighty percent of all of the donations that we received. We were able to donate the rest to several different organizations around town, and we saw more than one hundred families in need come through the door. So it was a pretty fun success story for us. So we decided that in November that we were going to have another drive that focused on pulling together winter weather-type clothing and blankets for those in need. So from now until November ninth, we will be collecting donations of coats, hats, gloves, mittens, socks, long underwear, blankets, tents, anything you can think that someone who lives outside for the winter might need to live outside for the winter. We will be hosting the free rummage sale for this event, again at Central Church on November ninth. Thanks.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Mike Bahura. My address is six-thirty-one East Big Beaver in Troy, that's where my office is located. I am one of the owners of the, one of the two provisioning centers that were awarded a conditional license. I just want to take this opportunity to say thank you on behalf of my group. We really look forward to redeveloping the old Madison Athletic Center. It's really gonna be really one of our best sites that we've done to date. We're looking forward to it. I have personally a lot of history in Madison Heights. I graduated from Bishop Foley in nineteen ninety-five. One of the other guys is a Lamb Fear graduate. In nineteen ninety-five, I owned and ran the Save-A-Lot at Lebanon John R. for probably ten years, and we've owned it since two thousand and four. So we have a lot of roots in Madison Heights, and I think those of you that have dealt with me or my uncle from Save-A-Lot know that we've always tried to be a good business neighbor. We want to work with the city to try to make this project as beautiful as we have shown it. And then there's a lot of other things that we're gonna be doing that we laid out in our application. And not to get into a debate with anybody, I certainly know this is still a taboo issue with a lot of people. I could tell you that we just opened a provisioning center in LaPierre just about a month ago. And the first six-hundred patients that we saw, sixty percent of them were aged sixty-two years and older, which was even surprising to me. And a lot of them had very serious medical issues that were really using medical marijuana to treat their ailments, whether it was cancer, pain, whatever the case may be. So I know that there's still this stigma or stereotype that this is just a place for people to get their weed. I can assure you that that has not been the case in the other operating facility that we have already opened. So also, the way it's regulated by the state, I mean, this is probably gonna be one of the most secure facilities in the city, short of the police department. There's gonna be cameras, on-staff security. I mean, it's really gonna be a place that people are gonna feel safe. We're gonna have many millions of dollars invested into this. It doesn't behoove us or anybody involved with us to try to sell to minors or try to do anything outside the boundaries of what the state has set forth for us. So I know what I say now is probably not gonna alleviate all your concerns, but I could promise you this is gonna be a state-of-the-art facility. With that, I, again, I just want to say thank you, and we look forward to working with the city.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address city council? The meeting is open to the public. All right, we'll close this portion of the meeting. We can continue on to reports. We have two tonight. The first report is item D one. It's from the city manager. It's the inter-local agreement for legal education with the Michigan Indigent Defense Council, or Corporation. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes. In accordance with the compliance plan approved by the city council and the Michigan Indigent Defense Commissioner, the MIDC, the forty-third District Court has negotiated with Oakland County to provide continuing legal education for the court-appointed criminal defense attorneys. Oakland County will fulfill the necessary administrative and organizational requirements needed to ensure full compliance with the MIDC's mandated standards for three hundred dollars per participating attorney. These fees are included in the grant reimbursement from the MIDC. Judge Hunt, the court administrator, and I recommend the approval of this inter-local agreement with Oakland County for MIDC continuing legal education and authorize the city manager to sign on behalf of the city.
Thank you, what's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Sir, I move that the city council agree with the recommendation for the inter-local agreement for legal education and that we authorize the city manager to sign on behalf of the city of this approved contract.
Thank you, is there support?
Your honor.
Mrs. Grafstein?
Support.
Thank you, a motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilor Grafstein, to adopt the recommendation for the approval of the inter-local agreement with Oakland County for MIDC continuing legal education and authorize the city manager to sign on behalf of the city. Is there discussion on this item? All right, let's vote, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose say no? The motion carries. The next report is D two. It was added to the agenda earlier tonight. It's the tentative agreement between the city and the forty-third District Court Union. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
No, but I can tell you that this union agreement follows the same pattern as all of our other union agreements with the city, and it covers the period from July first, two thousand and eighteen, through July first, two thousand and twenty. So the next two years, actually, and the past one year.
Thank you. What's the wish of city council?
Your honor?
Yes, sir.
I move that we adopt and approve the tentative agreement with the forty-third District Court Union.
Thank you, is there support?
Your honor.
Mrs. Grafstein?
Support.
Thank you, a motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Councilor Grafstein, to adopt the tentative agreement between the city of Madison Heights and the forty-third District Court Union. Is there discussion?
Just a question, sir. Ms. Marsh, is that the last agreement? Or do we still have wanted somebody out yet? Or have we completed our negotiations?
No, this is the final agreement. This was the only outstanding one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, is there other discussion? Okay, let's vote, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose say no? A motion carries. Next on the agenda is item F one. It's a bid award or purchase. It's a request from the police chief regarding the purchase of police tasers. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes, fiscal year two thousand and twenty budget includes twenty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars for the replacement of police department tasers to be added to an MMRMA grant for seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars, bringing the total amount available to thirty-four thousand two hundred and thirty-seven. The total cost for the tasers, cartridges, training cartridges, warranties, battery packs, and carrying holsters is thirty-two thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars from Axon Enterprise Incorporated, the manufacturer and the sole source provider for tasers. Based on the information provided by the Department of Justice, staff and I recommend the approval of this purchase from Axon Enterprises for tasers and related equipment from federal forfeiture funds under the equitable sharing program not to exceed thirty-two thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Thank you, what's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mrs. Scott?
I move to approve the purchase of police tasers from Axon Enterprise, Inc., for tasers and related equipment from federal forfeiture funds under the equitable sharing program not to exceed thirty-two thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Thank you, is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Geddings?
Support.
Thank you, a motion was made by Councilwoman Scott, seconded by Councilman Geddings, to approve the purchase of tasers from Axon Enterprise, Inc. and related equipment from federal forfeiture funds under the equitable sharing program in an amount not to exceed thirty-two thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Is there discussion? Your honor? Yes, sir. Since we have the chief police here, maybe we can ask him a few questions? If you don't mind?
Good idea.
Chief? Welcome.
Welcome, thank you.
So let's start with, for the public at home. I mean, what are some of the policies with tasers? It's a non-lethal weapon that sedues potential criminals or suspect? Maybe you can elaborate a little bit more and talk about that versus lethal weapon?
Yes. Mayor and city council, thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. The tasers, yes, we've been carrying them for multiple years. They are a less lethal weapon. The taser can be used when we have a subject that is not complying with orders or someone who is potentially a threat to the officers, depending on whether it's fists or other type of weapons that they may have. It is a very debilitating device. It affects the central nervous system and basically shuts down all of the muscle mass in your body. So if you've ever seen one, seen someone get taser, you know, they go stiff as a board and then usually fall to the ground. So it's a pretty quick thing. But it's relatively safe, as long as it's being used properly. The officers go through training twice a year, make sure that they know what parts of the body can be targeted, which is generally just muscle mass, nothing to the head, chest area. And it protects our officers and keeps them safer by having the availability of that type of weapon that's non-lethal.
So another quick question. So it depends on if they use that versus their handgun, depending on what's going on at the scene, correct? I mean, if they're gonna use the same type of force as what's presented?
Yes. So basically, what you're referring to is we have what's called the use of force continuum. And we don't always follow that use of force continuum because it depends on where you come into it. So if somebody is using just their hands, we wouldn't necessarily go right to a taser. We would use soft hand controls. But then the officers have the ability to go up from there. If they needed to use pepper spray, we also carry a pepper spray. If that's not effective, or we need to go beyond that, they can use the taser, or they can use an impact weapon. We do still carry batons. And from that point, it's everything up to and last resort would be lethal force.
Thank you. Welcome. Good questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
I have a question also, please, chief. I know this is probably hard for you to estimate it, but what percentage of the time in a typical arrest would you be forced to use the tasers?
I would say before, when the tasers were brand-new, it was much more. But now, we have seen a lot of gaining compliance just by the person knowing that we have the taser, the taser being pulled out. The officers are always instructed that when they pull the taser out, they're to say taser, 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 to alert the person to that. We've had a lot of people go right to no longer being aggressive and resistant after that. So I would probably say if I was to throw out a percentage, maybe three percent.
Okay.
But having the ability and having that weapon has really changed how fast we have to go up the scale.
That's great. Thank you.
Other discussion? All right, let's vote, all in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed say no? The motion carries. The next item on the agenda are ordinances. We have one for discussion tonight. It's item G one on the agenda. It's from the city attorney's office. It's ordinance twenty-one forty-four regarding recreation marijuana facilities. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes, on November sixth of two thousand and eighteen, Michigan voters approved the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, Proposal eighteen dash one, which legalized recreational marijuana and recreational marijuana establishments. On July the third, the Marijuana Regulatory Agency issued emergency administrative rules for the purpose of implementing this act. The MRA has stated that they will start accepting applications for recreational marijuana establishments on November the first of two thousand and nineteen. Thus, Michigan communities must decide if they are going to allow or prohibit state-licensed recreational marijuana establishments. Prior to the state issuing license, or municipalities will effectively lose the ability to enact any local regulations concerning recreational marijuana establishments. Thus, attached for city council's consideration is a proposed ordinance that temporarily prohibits recreational marijuana establishments pursuant to the MRTMA. The proposed ordinance contains a sunset provision that repeals the prohibition on April the first of two thousand and twenty. This was done in order to give the city council an opportunity to consider all of the available options under the MRTMA and thoroughly review the recently enacted state administrative rules to determine the long-term policy considerations for recreational marijuana establishments and to determine whether this is a majority of council that supports allowing recreational marijuana establishments in the city. In addition, if there is support for recreational marijuana facilities, this will give city council time to direct staff on the possible conversation of existing medical marijuana facilities into recreational marijuana establishments and whether or not to open new license to new applicants. Regardless, by placing a sunset provision in the proposed ordinance, city council will need to determine what direction and action to take regarding recreational marijuana establishments prior to that repeal date.
Thank you, what's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Sir, I move that the, yeah. I move that the council adopt, is this an amendment to, or is this ordinance twenty-one forty-four?
It's ordinance twenty-one forty-four.
Okay. Adopt twenty-one forty-four as recommended by the city attorney's office.
Thank you, Mr. Corbett, is there support?
Your honor.
Mrs. Grafstein?
Support.
Thank you, a motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilor Grafstein, to adopt the recommended ordinance twenty-one forty-four regarding opting out of recreational marijuana facilities. Is there discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
No, I made the motion, so.
On first reading, I'm sorry. Mr. Corbett, could you make it clear that approval is on first reading?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I meant to say that on first reading.
Thank you, Mrs. Grafstein, the support for first?
Support first reading.
Okay, so I'll restate it. Mr. Corbett made a motion, supported by Ms. Grafstein, to adopt on first reading the recommended ordinance twenty-one forty-four with the subject of opting out, temporarily prohibiting recreation marijuana facilities. Is there discussion on this matter?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
I agree with the opting-out provision. The only thing I didn't understand, and I still don't understand it, perhaps the attorney can discuss with me. To me, the sunset provision within the recommendation is absolutely redundant. It's unnecessary and somewhat confusing. If at some future date, a subsequent council or this council were to decide to repeal it and to legalize, it would simply repeal this ordinance and move forward. Setting a hard date of April the first, I think, invites all sorts of problems. For example, let's say, what's the date that the implementation? Is it December first or November first? I'm sorry.
November.
November first. Let's just say on November the second, someone files suit challenging some aspect of the regulation. It could be six, eight months, or a year. And come April the first, you just, you know, presumably, council would be smart enough to realize what's going on. But setting a hard and fast date for repeal or sunset of this doesn't make any sense to me when the council could very easily just repeal it if that was the will of the council at some later date. So can you discuss this with me?
Mr. Mayor?
Please.
Thank you. Early on in my discussions with council regarding opting out of recreational, one of the first discussions I had with several members was putting something in there to basically show that they were gonna be considering it and working on it and looking at it and considering it. So by putting the sunset provision in there, that was my way of basically stating that on the record through the expressed desire of certain council members that requested that type of consideration in this ordinance. I think you're absolutely right, it is redundant because if council decides to eventually allow adult-use facilities, you're right, they can simply amend the ordinance and take it from there or repeal and replace it with the new ordinance allowing it at any future date. That was just to try to accomplish the goals that somebody had desired to, several members desired to add early on in the discussions before this even came for your consideration. It wouldn't be, it would be fine if there was majority support to remove that provision from it between now and second reading. We certainly could do that if a majority of council believes that's something you want to do and take that out for second reading if so desired by council.
Well, I think we'd do that tonight, there'd be no reason. Yeah, you put off the second reading. I'd be interested to hear the rest of the council's opinion on this. But like I said, to me, that's, it's just an invitation to trouble. It's unnecessary, regardless of where you stand on this issue. It doesn't make any difference whether you're crazy for it or crazy against it. This is a useless provision in the ordinance and potentially dangerous if for any reason, at some level beyond us, the regulations or the implementation is delayed. Again, hypothetically, and I don't think it's a huge hypothetical, somebody challenges in court some aspect of the regulation. And so all of a sudden, the implementation date is in April the first, at some later date. We've got a sunset that's going to lift and put us back in the position you were trying to get us to avoid, which is an unregulated environment.
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please. And I, the state's been very clear on the fact that they are moving forward for sure with implementation.
Oh, I have no doubt about that.
So I don't, and I don't suspect, similar to medical marijuana facilities, that we're really gonna see anything that's gonna stop that. That, I don't see it moving any less forward than medical facilities did. So I fail to see the danger, sorry. But I don't disagree with the fact. That was just a way to kind of put out there, hey, we're working on it.
Well, from your lips, the God's ear, I guess. But, and either that, or either... Well, from your lips, the God's ear, I guess. But, uh, and either that, or even let's say the council has troubles coming to an agreement by April. To me, it's just unnecessary. Um, it gives the council a hard date of four months, uh, five months, whatever it is, to, um, to resolve any conflicts and either implement, or I guess the ultimate would be to just make permanent the, uh...
Correct.
The ban. But I, and like I said, I'll, I'd like to hear where the rest of the council is on this aspect, and then we'll go from there. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. Other discussion?
Your honor?
Yes, please.
So I think this is necessary in the same respect that it took us, uh, several years to really dig into medical a- as it was evolving. Uh, we had several meetings on it, uh, I think a half a dozen legal opinions, trying to get an understanding of how the state was going to regulate it before deciding to take any type of legislative action. Uh, so I do think that it's, that it's important for us to do this. I, I think that the, the sunset provision does serve a point, though, in so much as legislation by referendum almost happened to us with medical. There was a proposal out there that was significantly, significantly more, uh, than what we put forward as a council, that was tossed by a technicality through the petition signing process. And so what that sunset provision would do, in, in, in my opinion, and I do support it, is it signals to those that might go out and get petitions to create their own legislation for recreational, that we are working on it, and it stops them from doing that, at least indicating to them that we are working on it as a legislative body. If you remove that provision, you do open yourself up for that type of referendum taking place, which would then put a proposal on the ballot that may not be as beneficial or might be against the will of both the council, uh, a- and the people. I mean, the people would vote on it at that point, but they wouldn't have a say necessarily on the technical aspects, the things that we did, like with scoring to make sure that we had the strongest partners available. Um, we might not have as much control over that depending on how they write that ordinance that gets put to voters. So I think signaling that sunset provision is important to let those that might advocate and, and take a petition, uh, know that we are working on it before they would do that.
Thank you. Is there other discussion?
Well, Your Honor?
Yes, please.
Well, the, again, I'm, with, with respect, that doesn't make any sense because the, um, the most likely petition, uh, is going to be to repeal the ordinance of the council altogether. It's not going to be to replace the structure. I mean, I don't think I'm talking out of school here. I think that's the worst-kept secret in the area. So there is no structure that's gonna be placed over it. It would be just simply a suspend and repeal. Uh, or, or it could go the way you're saying, but I mean, it's likely the other. But in any event, I don't see where we need the sunset, though. I, I still don't, signaling, if, if, if you presume that, um, if you presume that eventually we're going to go to a licensed system of recreational outlets, if that's your base assumption, then just say it. Otherwise, um, it doesn't make any sense.
Your honor, if I may?
Yes.
Your, uh, so my, my base assumption is before we acted on medical, there was a petition that had significant requirements that we may, you know, we didn't necessarily support as a council. My worry is that if we don't signal that we will deal with this at a later date, that we may see the same type of ordinance crafted that specifies maybe that we need to have five recreational dispensaries, and that's put to a vote of the citizens. What I'd like to do is signal to all those two-thirds of voters that were in favor that we will be revisiting this issue. This allows us to get more information, to understand what the state is doing, uh, and understand whether or not this is something that makes sense for the city, as opposed to the potential that if we just opt out without the clause, we might just, you know, we're signaling that we've opted out, which could inspire that type of, uh, su- support that puts something on the ballot that we might not be comfortable with.
Yeah, it's, it's, I feel like it's a common enough tool, um, in municipal's playbook, municipalities' playbook, to do a, a moratorium. And, uh, I think the mayor Protem's right that, uh, council took too long to reach a resolution on medical, and that inspired a private effort to, uh, adopt by referendum, a pretty horrendous bill. Um, so I think we do need to demonstrate to the public that the door's not completely shut down, but we're still at the drafting room table, um, chewing on this. And so that's why I support the temporary opt-out.
Your honor.
Yeah, with the sunset of April. Yes, Ms. Grafstein?
May I comment?
Ms. Grafstein, please.
Okay. Um, so I am fine with the sunset. Um, the adult use was only voted in less than a year ago, and so while many people expected it and were working the lawyers, really, a lot of this, uh, most of this boils down to the lawyers, but while people were working on this, it was actually not even passed until November 2018. Um, but they were prepared. So as soon as it did become legal, as soon as adult use became legal, they started working on it. And, um, for their part, the government has had a variety of work groups where they've asked people who are interested on either side regarding adult use. And I attended one of those in the spring. And there were people from the industry, and there were people from government, and there were people who said, "Not in my town." And so it's being looked at, and that was in the spring. So April 1st is really a year from that one specific work group. So I'm fine with the sunset because I, as I'm sure the rest of council are, are, I'm educating myself, the pros and the cons, so that when, or should we get there, you know, I've, I've got, I've got some knowledge on it. Uh, last year, Mayor Hartwell, Mrs. Scott, and myself attended the Michigan Municipal League, and I believe all three of us attended, um, the presentation by the Michigan government. So not the drug dealer on the corner everyone's worried about, but the actual Michigan representative who was talking, I think, at the time about medical. But it's all related. So I think that, uh, by putting in a sunset, it allows everyone the time to educate themselves because this is even a year old. So I, I wouldn't be comfortable voting something in now, that's for sure. Um, and we'll see in April where we're at.
Other discussion?
Your honor?
Yes, please.
Does the maker of the motion feel strong enough to change the motion?
I'll put it on the table if you want for the, um...I'll just, uh, I can amend my own motion. I'll, uh, I'll move to amend, uh, in whatever form you'd like, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I'll put it on the table to, uh, a substitute, my own.
I think the, I don't think...
Well, what's the proper way to do it?
I think you'd have to withdraw your first motion and make a new. I, I don't, because it's your motion on the table...
Yeah, right.
I don't think you can, um...
Whatever's easier, sir.
So instead of making a substitute motion, Mr. Corbett, uh, your procedural move, just withdraw your present motion, and then it's a open table for any...
Okay.
But I'll give you the first chance to speak.
I, well, yeah, I'll, uh...
And then support would have to withdraw.
I mean, that, that is if you feel strong enough to do it.
Well, I'd...
Someone else could make a substitute motion.
But, but don't you go ahead because I, I've got a feeling that it may not get withdrawn because the substitute would have to agree.
So I'll restate the motion on the table. Just, so the motion on the table, um, is effectively for the city to opt out of recreational marijuana. It includes a sunset, um, where the opt-out will expire April 1st, 2020. That's what's on the table now, for the city to opt out, which would mean to prohibit recreational marijuana facilities in the city of Madison Heights. That position would sunset April 1st, 2020. That's what's on the table now.
Okay. Let's see what happens. I'll withdraw my motion, Mr. Mayor.
The support withdraw, or?
Aye. Sure, support withdraws.
Okay, so there's no motion on the table. What, what's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corbett?
I move that the council adopt the resolution, uh, suggested by the city attorney's office without the sunset provision.
If I may, Your Honor. I know you, it's not a resolution, it's a proposed ordinance.
Whatever works.
We can't opt out by resolution. It has to be an ordinance, uh...
Okay, my apologies. That, that we adopt the recommended ordinance, um, 2144 suggested by the attorney's office without the sunset language.
Thank you. Is, is there, uh, support?
Your honor?
Mr. Soltes?
Support.
Okay, motion was made, a new motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilman Soltes, to adopt on first reading the proposed ordinance 2144...
But we're keeping the sunset, aren't we?
That's out.
Why not?
But excluding the language regarding the sunset. Is there discussion on this new motion?
I just have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Gettings, please.
So we were, I thought we were talking in favor of the sunset, and now we're retracting that, or?
Yeah, now it'll just be a, uh, the Ma- the city of Madison Heights will opt out of recreational marijuana.
Thank you.
No fine print. Is there, uh, other discussion? Okay, uh, let's vote. Um...
Give me a roll call, sir.
Yeah, sure. Okay, so I'll restate the motion. Uh, the motion is, uh, for the city to adopt on first reading the proposed ordinance 2144 regarding recreation marijuana facilities, um, excluding the language regarding the sunset. Uh, will the clerk take the vote?
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Councilman Gettings?
Yes.
Councilor Grafstein?
No.
Councilwoman Scott?
Yes.
Councilman Soltes?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bliss?
No.
Mayor Hartwell?
I vote no. The motion carries four to three. The next item on the agenda are the minutes. Um, it's the regular city council meeting minutes of 8:26:19. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Gettings?
I make a motion we, uh, approve the minutes from 8:26:19. It's council meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion regarding, uh, the mi- uh, the motion made by Mr. Gettings and Mr. Corbett to adopt as printed the meeting minutes of 8:26:19?
The, one item, Your Honor, on the first page, I think it's the second paragraph. I believe inaudible, it's one word, not being a smart aleck, ma'am.
Did the clerk catch that? I didn't catch it.
Yep.
Okay, very good.
Yeah.
All right, so Mr. Gettings, uh, do you amend your motion to allow that one change?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Corbett?
Yes, that's good by me.
All right, any, uh, any other discussion on this item? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Are there any, uh, nominations to boards and commissions from council members? All right, um, I have a, an appointment I'd like council to confirm. I'm appointing Cliff Oglesby to a seat on the planning commission to fill the ZBA representative position. He's accepted the position, and so I would ask that council confirm my appointment pending his resignation from, uh, any board that he has to resign from.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Gettings?
You want, ready for a second?
Or no?
Sorry, excuse me. Jumping gun, false start link.
You can make a motion.
Sure, there we go. Uh, I make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to appoint Cliff Oglesby to the, excuse me, it's not community block grant, it's zoning board of appeals, correct?
Planning commission.
Planning commission, excuse me.
Board of Appeals.
Yep, there we go, to the planning commission.
As the zoning board representative?
Yes, sir.
Pending his resignation...
Correct.
Of other boards.
On the letter he submitted.
Okay. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
Second.
Thank you. Motion was made by Councilman Gettings, seconded by Councilwoman Scott to confirm the mayor's appointment of Cliff Oglesby to the planning commission, the ZBA representative position, um, pending his resignation, um, to any other boards. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Gettings?
Just like to say, maybe I'm out of turn right now, but he's a really good gentleman. Uh, he headed up the fire station, uh, for the new fire station, put in a lot of time. He goes way back with Meals on Wheels, and he's just an outstanding volunteer, and, uh, glad to have him in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mrs. Scott?
Yeah, I would, too, would like to compliment Cliff Oglesby on his involvement. He is very historically astute and, uh, can answer many questions because he's lived here so long, and his father, uh, was here for years, too. So I'm glad we're appointing, appointing him.
Thank you. Other discussion?
Your honor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, this is, this is an important, uh, an important time for the planning commission with the new master plan, the first in a couple of decades. And I, I believe, uh, Cliff Oglesby is the current chair of the ZBA, right? Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so I, I think that that, it speaks highly of him that, uh, that board appointed him as the chair, and I think we're, I personally, as a member who serves on the planning commission, am excited to be able to have him come aboard, particularly at this important time as we redo this master plan.
Thank you, sir. Is there other discussion? All right, let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Are there other nominations, any other, other boards and commissions? Other nominations?
Your honor?
Okay, um...
Your honor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I move that we accept, uh, Cliff Oglesby's resignation from the community development block grant, correct?
Very good. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mrs. Scott?
Support.
Thank you. Motion was made by Mayor Protem Bliss, seconded by Councilwoman Scott to accept Cliff Oglesby resignation from the CDVG, uh, review committee. Is there discussion? All in favor, uh, signify by saying aye.
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 I'm sorry, was there a, uh, comment?
No, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I'll have to restate the vote. I'm sorry. All in favor of accepting his resignation, please do so by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say no. All right, the motion carries. Thank you. Were there other matters regarding any, uh, appointments? Okay, we can continue on. Um, uh, there's no other business, so before we adjourn, I'd invite any closing comments from members of council and staff. We could begin with Mr. Corbett.
Just a reminder, on Fridays, I keep, uh, office hours up at the, um, library if anybody wants to come in to discuss a city issue, uh, or a complaint or a problem, or whatever. Um, we're there from 1:00 to 3:00, uh, the conference room. I had a few people in the other day. Um, one of the ladies, in fact, I might as well mention it right now, I forgot to drop you a note on that. Uh, they're concerned about the traffic and people running lights on, um, the corner of Edward and 12 Mile. Especially now with kids back in school now, it's a busy intersection. And, uh, they're concerned that people are cheating the light, trying to make the turn, and, uh, and, uh, the lady said just the other day she was walking her dog, and, um, she said one of the, uh, one of the ladies that, who, uh, the guards at the corner nearly got hit by somebody trying to beat the light, uh, coming through. So, uh, you know, folks need to remember that kids are back in session, and the responsibility, uh, you can't count on the kids to, uh, stay on the corner. You've got to, uh, you've got to be, uh, on your game. So, um, that's it, sir.
Thank you, very good. Mr. Bliss?
Yes, Your Honor. A few things tonight. Uh, first, I'm really excited, uh, that all of our contracts with every one of our unions are, are now, uh, wrapped up. Uh, none had to go to arbitration. That's, uh, testament to the good work that our, uh, staff, our legal team, uh, put in into those negotiations. And I think the dialogue between both sides has been and will continue to be, uh, one of cooperation. Um, and it, it just, I love the good work. Uh, it's a really positive thing for the city. Uh, you see contentious, uh, battles over that type of contract in some other communities. Uh, and it's just a, a really, uh, big thing that I'm personally really proud of, that our staff and then our loo- union representatives were able to come to an agreement without having to take it, uh, to court and to arbitration. Uh, I think that that's really powerful, and, uh, myself, uh, you know, both as a council member and as a resident, I'm really happy that we don't have a war going on between unions and, and council and staff. Uh, it's just not conducive of the type of environment that we want as a community, and so I'm really happy that it played out this way. Uh, which, by the way, is, uh, the, the second time that I've seen, this is the second cycle I've seen, uh, or third cycle I've seen where, you know, we've been able to do that without having to go to arbitration, uh, which doesn't happen very often in this community, and we should all be proud of that. Uh, second thing, I would like to, uh, thank, uh, the representative from Alternative RX, uh, who came here tonight. Um, early on in, in, in the process is... is, as we were defining what, what type of ordinance we could even craft that would tie in with medical marijuana, I think the big thing for me was to be able to find the right partners, and so we created a scoring mechanism that would make sure that not only were they professional and safe and secure, but we'd make sure that they also had really strong tie-in and desire to see our community grow and thrive, and, you know, hearing about, you know, the, the owners who both graduated from Madison Heights schools, longtime business owner in this community, I think that's incredibly important to note, and as those additional investments that they're making into things like our parks and our downtown is coming from a place of, you know, just a really good place because they themselves have been in and around this community for a long time. As we went through the process, we were, I personally was trying to be respectful on both sides. We had people speaking out at our public meeting about personal health challenges and how they depended on access to this medicine, that 60-plus percent that were 60 and older that I think the gentleman mentioned, but we were also hearing from those who experienced addiction and were worried about the changes that this new industry could bring because it is so new, and it's something that I think is similar to cigarettes and alcohol becoming legal and what changes that made. Alcohol was initially medication, same thing with caffeine, and so there, there is, there is some tie-in to that, and I, I think we had to be cautious on both sides. We had to make sure that no licenses could be in close proximity to a school or park, and we needed to make sure that we had the right partners, and so I'm really thankful to, to see one of those in the audience here tonight, and really excited to see the upgrades both to that site that's been vacant for, I think, seven years, and all of the upgrades and investment into that site, but also their work and investments into the community and into both the outreach as well as our physical structures like parks and our downtown that I think is really powerful for our city. Finally, to tie in to, Councilman Corbett had mentioned comments from, from residents at his open office hours. I receive a lot of comments from, from residents, mostly on Facebook, I get some email, I get some phone calls, but there was one, there was one issue that I got a lot of comments on that we have thankfully resolved, and that was the nature center parking. So, for those who've been watching, I know city council meetings are really, really interesting and entertaining to watch, and there's so many watching at home, I'm sure, but what, what I think is awesome is a few, gosh, like two, three months ago, we were talking about upgrades to the nature center, and while I've always been frustrated and hearing residents that are frustrated about the lack of free parking at the nature center, it was really compounded with that investment that was being made to upgrades. It effectively is double taxation, so the tax dollars that the residents are paying are going towards upgrades, but residents who want to see those upgrades had to pay in order to park. Didn't seem to make sense to me, I was frustrated, I spoke out on it, and thankfully, also in the audience was the architect and champion of the original deal that saved our nature center by bringing in the county as a partner, County Commissioner McGilvery, who also expressed that same sentiment, and so between his efforts and the Herculean efforts of our city staff led by City Manager Marsh, to be able to create a new deal, this deal actually allows free parking at the nature center. The signs have already been taken down, there is no permit needed, any resident can go and park at the nature center completely free of charge. I'm really proud of that, I'm so thrilled that staff was able to get that done with the county, and hats off once again to County Commissioner McGilvery for making this, his priority. You know, he's done an incredible job over the years of making Madison Heights his priority, former council member, former mayor of the city, and now our county commissioner, and once again has helped the nature center and helped more residents access it, so hats off to him. I hope we can send him a thank you letter from staff, I don't know if it needs to be a resolution from council, but I'd support that as well, because he once again came in and helped, and now residents that couldn't park there because they maybe couldn't afford the parking pass are now able to, and that's a win in my book.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Geddings?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I just want to remind the residents that this Thursday, I believe at 6 o'clock, and is it here, Melissa? I'm sorry.
It is, from 6 to 8.
6 to 8. You can meet the candidates that are running, there's five folks running for city council and two for mayor, and we hope that you all come out and ask questions and get enlightened and things like that. I thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Assistant City Attorney, Ms. Kretowski?
Thank you, Mayor, I have nothing.
City Manager, Ms. Marsh?
I have a bunch of things. Happy belated birthday to Mark Bliss.
Thank you.
And happy birthday to the mayor, but last year I got fantastic cake, so.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sorry your birthday was not today. So happy birthday to you both. I wanted to mention the meet the candidates that Bob Geddings just spoke about in council chambers from 6 to 8, and also next Thursday on September the 19th, we're having an informational proposal in each meeting. That's just to help residents make a decision of what's best for their families. It's actually going to be hosted at the Horace Brown Madison Place, it's called, to make it more user-friendly, I think. We're focusing really on trying to attract families there. We're going to have members of recreation staff available to provide activities for kids so the parents can pay attention and get their questions answered, and we also will be providing pizza if you don't have time to grab dinner beforehand. It starts at 6 o'clock, presentation's about 15 to 20 minutes long, and then questions. Typically, these sessions have been lasting about an hour just because of the amount of questions that come up, and we also have staff, all of our staff about is available, and we can meet individually with each person to tell them exactly what it means monetarily for their particular household so they can make an educated decision. On October the 5th, the city is hosting our very first road rally. It is going to be a fundraiser for the holiday decorations, so that should be a fun event. You can still register, you can have up to a team of six. On October the 12th, Fire Station Number Two and the DDA will be hosting an open house, and on November the 16th is the annual women's club tea. So that's it.
Thank you. City Clerk, Mrs. Prince?
Thank you. Absentee ballot applications are available online or in the city clerk's office for the November 5th, 2019 election. If you'd like to, if you'd like an application or you would like to be added to the permanent absentee mailing list, please contact the clerk's office, 248-583-0826, or you're also welcome to call or step in. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, Cheryl. Counselor Grastine?
We had an environmental meeting this morning, and so, last meeting, if you'll remember, we made a few changes on the board, so one of our new members came today, and it was a great conversation. Talked a lot, a lot of different things, but one of the things we talked about was that we're getting a donation of trees to help repopulate the DDA, and that would be coming from the other applicant for the medical marijuana facility. And then the other thing we talked about was also a Halloween costume swap, so we just had that conversation this morning. I've contacted the PTAs in the city, and a couple of them have gotten back to me, but it's just this morning, so it's a little bit new, but basically the idea is we're going to collect costumes, hopefully the schools are going to help with that, and then in the middle of October, we are going to be able to give them out to people. It's one of these things that people wear a costume once, there might be multiple kids, friends, cousins, that you give to the next year, but for the most part costumes are only used once and then either donated or thrown away, so we're looking at a way that we can reuse those. So if you are interested in participating with that, please contact me. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselwoman Scott?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have several people I'd like to give thanks to, and I think several people in our city want to do that as well. Number one is Governor Whitmer, who banned flavored e-cigarettes and vaping products in our state, including advertising. We're the first state in the nation to ban that, and I applaud her for taking that bold move. It's a public health crisis, it will be in effect for six months, but then after six months it will be renewable, and the Department of Health and Human Services will regulate that use. I also want to thank Mark Kimball, who is the current president of the Madison School Board, for his stand against marijuana in the newspaper this last week. I also want to thank Kimberly Heizer, Heizler, who's the director of the Coalition. I really witnessed a very self-sacrificing event at our last coalition meeting. Kim Heizler, as you know, is the executive director of the Madison Heights Community Coalition, and against the use of marijuana in our city, and voted for that. She brought that question up to the coalition, and within a few minutes, we decided as a coalition to reject a check that was offered to us because we would be exactly using that money to fight what's being offered to us by the check holder, and, and so that to me would be a farce. It's taking the money and using it against what we stand for, and that is the use of no marijuana for our youth, and it's a strain on our public systems of the police department and the fire department. I also want to thank our Councilman Dave Soltes for taking a stand against that, and Kim Heizer also said that students who begin using marijuana before the age of 18 are four to seven times more likely to develop a marijuana use disorder, and that's what we're dealing with by even considering this and allowing it into our city. We won't want to be called, as Mark Kimball suggested, Marijuana Heights. We want to be Madison Heights, and we want to have a good environment for our citizens who live here. I would also like to applaud three members of our coalition who, after we voted to not accept the check that was given to us by a business, to also then have three members on our coalition, one civic and two business people donate their own money so that we can hold an event for students at Lampier High School, and I applaud them dearly. They are going to be sponsoring on Saturday, October 12th, which is Lampier Homecoming, an escape room event, so that the children will not be wanting to be going out afterwards and celebrating and using marijuana, which can happen quite often. There's going to be an event at the escape room, which is right on John R., north of 13 Mile Road. The students will be able to go through the haunted house, or they will be able to visit the escape room and join in the activities that they have. There will be pizza, and there will be raffle prizes we're giving to attendees. That money was very generously donated to go against marijuana use for our youth, and to support the police and fire department in their quest to keep that out of our city. I just wanted to say something, and that would be that no amount of beautification in our city will ever compensate for the dangers that marijuana brings to our youth and the extra exertion by our police and fire in order to keep that controlled. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Soltes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to make a comment about Councilwoman Scott, that the city here in Madison Heights was the first city in the state to ban vaping for minors, because at that time, the state did not have a law against it. So I, I'm grateful that council had the wisdom to do that. Second, I appreciate that we do the suicide prevention, or excuse me, prevention week, yes, proclamation. There's a lot of people that have, you know, been hit with that, suicide, a family member or friend, so I think it's important that we recognize it every year. My father committed suicide, I was 19, so it's, and it's real, and it really affects those who are left. There's a book written by a brilliant criminal psychiatrist, his name is James Gillian, and it's called Violence. It's a, it's an epidemic, national epidemic, and he talks about any type of violence in his book, whether it's homicide or suicide, the root cause is a repression of shame. So if anyone's interested in that, it's a, it's a great read to get a really understanding of violence in general. And lastly, we're still collecting donations for the diaper bank. Some come in, but we need more and more, so, you know, if you feel it's something you want to contribute, I appreciate it. We come up, we came to a figure like $42, we'd get a month's worth of diapers, and then the wipes would help too, but if, if you want to do more than that, that would be great, so just let me know, and we'll, there's always a mom or a child that can benefit from it, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Geddings, you have something else?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see, senior moment.
Ramona?
Ramona, thank you, sir. I just wanted to thank the services of a young lady who worked in the clerk's office for quite a while and also worked down the hall at, where was she at?
She's worked in housing, finance, almost every department in the city throughout her time here.
A jack-of-all-trades who put 28 years in here at the city and now is accepting a job in LaPierre, I believe, as the new city clerk, Ramona Sanchez, who sat in on many meetings when Cheryl was gone. She would be sorely missed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I was invited to the 75th anniversary of United Methodist Church on 11 Mile this past weekend. That church was founded in the year 1944. FDR was the president same year, same year as the Normandy invasion, D-Day, momentous year in American history and also in local Madison Heights history, or what would later become Madison Heights. So thank you, I appreciate United Methodist Church and their leaders for choosing Madison Heights for their community. Also, next Monday is the Mexican Independence Day. It's a very special day for many people in Madison Heights, for one reason, I don't know if you knew this, but the Mexican government, they have their council at office, not in Chicago, or Columbus, or Detroit, or Lansing, but in the city of Madison Heights. So it's a very special time of year, so the city will be issuing a proclamation to the Mexican government, through the council general, just thanking them for the strong relationship that the city of Madison Heights has with the Mexican government because of that unique proximity, but happy Independence Day to our Mexican brothers and sisters. It's actually, what, the 209th anniversary of Mexican independence? I thought that was a pretty special time of year. As I said, there's no other business tonight, so this meeting is adjourned. Good night.